All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by our team. We have got Jessica, Kim, Greg, Colin, and Amanda. Everybody's here. Say hi, everybody. You should be able to see everybody.
Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Everyone.
I don't know what took me so long to switch to gallery view on these recordings, you guys, but I feel like the Brady Bunch is kind of neat. Hey, everybody who is joining us, please come in and say hello in the chat. We're really excited to talk with you guys today to share some really cool information with you, show you some awesome stuff, and of course, help you get going and growing with your business. So hop over in the chat where you guys coming in from? Anybody doing any traveling anytime soon? I know we're about to. Oh, my God, I need it so bad.
That would be so nice. Vacation.
But it's not really, right? Because like I'm the only one that can like drive, so it's it's and it's like 12 hours driving, you know? We'll make a lot of stops. Awesome. Hey, what's up, everybody? Good to see you, all these great folks coming in. And I'm going to go ahead and pop over to our slides. Don't have a ton to show you slide wise today, but we do have some really important announcements for you guys. And then, of course, we're here to help you as well. Really importantly, here to help as always. If you're new here, you've never been here before, welcome. This is a session that we hold every week for anyone who's growing a business with Young Living. Oh, almost forgot. Here, while we do the slides, team, can we turn our videos? So it is visible on the screen. All right. So and obviously, that's not letting me do that either. Okay, this should be fine, right? Hold on. Sorry. Tech problems today. All right. Again, welcome, you guys. Today, we're going to talk about the great Get Oiling giveaway. This is the Aroma Sharing Convention Special. So we're glad you're here today. We're going to be giving away over $10,000 in value in features, resources, and coaching to help you grow. And we're going to tell you how to get access to those things and how to find us at Aroma Sharing and get into all those specifics here today. And then, of course, we're going to get into some live coaching and Q and A. If you came here today with questions, if you need some help from us, if you're struggling with a feature or understanding how something works, or you just you're just stuck on something in your business, or you want some feedback on something that you've done, please let us know in the chat. We have time for you. These sessions are designed to help you grow, no matter where you are in your business. And we're here to help you live because sometimes just referring you to an article or written something just doesn't quite cut it. So we're here to help you get through whatever you brought with you today. So first, guys, we we miss you. Like, we really wish that we could be in Salt Lake and like hug you and and shake your hand and say hi. And it's such a bright spot for us in our year. And and we really miss seeing you guys. But the good news is is that we were able to come on board as a sponsor for Aroma Sharing this year to help facilitate taking this thing online. So we are a sponsor along with Essential Your Products, Grow Workspace, and I Tobi. But also, you might notice when you go over to aromasharingonline.com that it's actually held on our platform. So this is actually being held inside of a private member area in the Get Oiling platform. We're really honored to be able to help facilitate that. Amanda has done an incredible job in making that happen. So props to Amanda. Guys, Aroma Sharing started today at, I think, 9:00 AM Central. I could be wrong. And it's going to go through, I believe, midnight on the 17th of June. So Aroma Sharing Online is where you want to go. This is, guys, the same place you'd find all of the amazing oily product and business vendors that you would go see prior to convention. The only difference here is that you've got 24-hour access, and it's all online shop in your pajamas. There's so much great stuff happening there. Anybody or does anybody here in the Aroma Sharing Facebook group, are you seeing like the stuff that's about to be on offer? Show of hands. Yeah, you guys, you want to check this out, right? And of course, for those of you who are shopping, let us know in the chat. Are you shopping already? Who's buying stuff? Who is already buying? So guys, we, as usual, we have a virtual, well, we have a booth. This time, it is virtual. So we don't get to see you in person, but you can come see us virtually at Aroma Sharing. And and when you head over there, you're going to learn more about this great Get Oiling giveaway, where we're giving away everything that you need to grow and a little something special for you. So I want to go over what these things are and what you'll find over on the page. So first, a very small handful of you may have seen a sneak peek at this workbook at the beginning of the year. If you were at one of Martha Crecci's live events, I believe that was back in January. But what I've created here for you guys is a workbook and a course. Now, it's not a huge course. It's a course you can actually move through pretty quickly and easily go back to reference. What this is, this goal getter, this goal getter workbook and course is to is a thing that is designed to help you create goals that you can reach. And I mean, big audacious ones that you can reach, and then to set a plan in place so that you can be accountable to actually getting it done. So much of us create a goal. We say, oh, hey, I want to get this. And I may even say, oh, hey, I want to get this in this amount of time, right? Hey, I really want to hit gold, or I want to hit gold by July, but we don't quite get there. And there are some very specific reasons why we don't, and very specific remedies that can help us solve that problem and ensure that we get our goals done. And so you can actually learn how to do this. It is free. We're giving this away. When you go over and join us at our virtual booth, you can get access to this entire course and the worksheet, no catch, totally free, ready for you to use. The next thing we're giving away, you guys, is a whole bottle of rose oil. We are giving away Young Living Rose Oil. There's going to be a drawing for this in July, and you're going to get details on the number of different ways that you can enter to win. All right, you can get multiple entries to win this. We've offered this for the past few years now. If there's somebody here who has won before, maybe let everybody know in the comments. This is the real deal. This is a really great giveaway. Another fun thing for those of you who love Martha Crecci, y'all, everybody on these sessions, I think most of you know and love Martha Crecci. I'm already seeing those hands go up. All right. So you may recognize this as being one of the most powerful tools in the arsenal of Go for Gold. Martha is going to be offering an entirely new training. And guys, I'm really excited to see what she offers here. This is going to be really focused on on time management, on focusing on the right things at the right times, so that running your business doesn't mean having your business run your life. It's it's pretty exciting. I personally can't wait to see it. That's something that you'll get access to again for free. And for those of you who do not have Go for Gold, you'll get access to her cheat sheet. And this is one that she uses, and of course, we use in Go for Gold to to really lead and guide our conversation. So it's easy to help move someone from a casual conversation into one that turns someone into a member. Really powerful. And then finally, we are relaunching the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. We've done this two times before. This is revamped, reworked, and oh, my gosh, this is so cool. You guys, this is taught by me. I have worked in brand consulting since 2012. It is really at the heart and soul of what I love to do is helping people tap into the power that they possess, that you possess, so that you can go out and achieve the things that you want in a way that does not cause friction. It feels good. It flows. It is you empowered, attracting the people that you want in your life and in your business to get the results that you want and make the impact that you are meant to make on this planet. And this is a $900 value. You can get access to this with an annual Get Oiling Membership at Basic and Up. And you get more details on this on our Aroma Sharing page. Guys, if you've done this before, you're going to want to do this again. And we do have a way for you to invite friends and get in for free as well. Pretty exciting. All right. So just to kind of go over big picture, right? So you've just seen the giveaways. There's more, of course. So when you get started with us at Basic and above on a monthly basis with Get Oiling, as always, it is $1 for your first month, right? $1 for your for your first month. If you are using a referral code of someone that you know who is with Get Oiling, you also get half off your second month. So make a friend, if you don't have one already, that can refer you in, and you guys both get to split that free month. You also get three months of two-way texting included when you sign up during Aroma Sharing, right? During the period of Aroma Sharing is when these things are valid. You get three months of two-way texting. Guys, this is a brand new thing. We used to just throw on free texting for a year when you signed up for annual. You're going to get three months of two-way texting included when you sign up for monthly at Basic and Above during Aroma Sharing. You also get an entry to win that bottle of rose oil. You get access to our 90-day Biz Building Challenge. This is an amazing vault of materials. It's well, I mean, it's not literally in a good oil involved. It's under the help button, but you get access to just dozens of hours of training to help you set up and run your business. And you get 200 extra marketing credits per month for life. This is the currency that runs your business, that runs the messaging strategies of your business, your emails and your texting. Now, when you start at Basic and above at Annual, you get a 30-day Money Back Guarantee, which we apply to all of our plans. You would decide to invest upfront for a year with annual. You do have 30 days to decide that you don't want it if you don't like it. So and we give you the money back if questions asked. You also get a free custom domain when you sign up for Basic and above at Annual. Yourname.com, yourbusinessname.com, really, really powerful thing to have going on in your business, easier to share when it's your own name. And it just, you know, if you're going to brand yourself, it just looks better for you, right? So you also get free two-way texting for a year and 1,000 extra marketing credits per month annually for life. Amazing, right? You get five entries instead of one to win that bottle of rose oil, and you get access to the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. Now, when you get started at Pro or Diamond Annually, you get all of those things that have been mentioned above, and you get a one-on-one consult with me. So guys, don't wait. Head over to Aroma Sharing. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of vendors who would love to see you, to serve you, to provide you with amazing products. And of course, we are there offering the things that we have just outlined there. So head over to aromasharingonline.com between now and the 17th, so that you can take advantage of what is on offer. Everyone, I mean, I've been talking to the sponsors personally. Everyone is offering something amazing. So it's worth spending some time and checking it out from the comfort of your home. So now we're going to move over into live coaching, Q and A. If you came here with questions today about the platform, about your business, about anything that you're dealing with right now, got something that you just can't quite figure out, we can even go live with you and answer your questions. So I'm going to go ahead and stop my share here, and we can come back to video. And yeah. We have people who want to sign up again. I love it. All right. Definitely got a couple of questions, I think, in the chat around like plans and stuff. Anything we want to address before we start hacking away at the Q and A? Oh, yeah. Hey, guys, by the way, if you're in the chat and you're posting questions, please go over to the Q and A box so we don't miss you. I definitely do see some questions over here.
Yeah, they're scrolling by kind of fast, so it's hard to see them.
Awesome. So if we want to just maybe start with a Q and A, and guys, just bring your questions over to the Q and A box so that we can make sure everyone gets answered. Tina asks, are we able to see the different email funnels somewhere and make any adjustments to them? I'd like to see what's going out before it's sent.
Sure, this one might be best demoed, and I probably can do that here in a second. Basically, there's a you go into the campaigns area. Sorry, I keep mistyping my address here. One second, I'll get the account going and and share this out quick. But yeah, you can you can see where they are. And probably the easiest way is to like log in or send the campaign to yourself or a contact that's maybe at a different email address if you want to see how that works. But all right. Oh, can you make me co-host? It's not letting me screen share.
Sorry about that. And I never even changed my name. I'm showing up as you. Gosh. It's one of those all day, all Monday, all week. Those are fun. All right. Where are you? The real Greg. There we go. There's the real Greg.
There we go. All right. Now I can now I can share that out. Yeah, all right. Cool. Okay, so to see the built-in campaigns, go under Settings here and then click Campaigns. And this is a test account, so I'll probably have to go over here all the way to page three. But there's this one called New Prospects. Well, any of the ones labeled was created by Get Oiling are the built-in ones. So you can kind of click around and see what's in there. There are several ones for different different countries. And New Prospects is usually the one that people have most questions about. You can click on that one and see all the messages that are in there. Now, there's some special things that show up here that only show up if you send yourself an email. So you want to do that first, try that out. And if you're, you know, if you're, if you want to see that sooner, we do have a way through email support. If you want to email us, we can send you what these are. You know, we have sample links on a pest contact if you want to try that out as well. But this is generally where you would go to see that. And while I'm here, I just wanted to show you so that in case you missed all the specials on our signup page, they are all listed out here, everything that Ashley had. So it's there for reference until it disappears.
That's right. Let's see. That's so that one's answered. While we're here, Greg, Tricia is asking, let's see, all of the features available to automate texting campaigns to new members and prospects. I'm not sure what you're asking here, but this is where you would be automating email or texting under Campaigns right here to your prospects or your members, and you're able to choose who those go to by filtering for tags, which would be for your members or for excluding your members, if you wanted to send something out to just leads, and then sending those campaigns that way or by having people opt in through a landing page.
Yeah, that actually kind of ties in with the next question here about having trouble scheduling emails, campaigns, and posts. So you can automate through campaigns, just like Ashley was talking about. You can also schedule emails and texts if you'd like. I'll just filter this down here. I guess there's only one, and you're opted out, but that's all right. It's sort of the same thing. So you filter however you want to. Filter or select the contacts that you want to mail or text to. Come up to the Actions button here and click either Mail or Text, depending on what you want to do. And the Schedule app, you do have to use this little, the the date chooser to correctly do this. Once you have this chosen, you pick a date and time and your time zone. If necessary, then, you know, hit Done and hit Schedule Mail, and it'll schedule it for that specific time. So it sounds like you're having problems with the email going out like right away. So you know, if you continue to have problems, certainly reach out and let us know, reach out to support.
All right. Debbie is asking if you could go over the analytics of Get Oiling, just wanting to make sure she's reading them correctly.
Sure, there's quite a lot of them. If you have questions about like a specific meaning of one, you know, certainly email us. But generally speaking, where you can find the analytics are on your dashboard. And of course, there's more here that show up depending on if you have a really, really busy system. You might see a lot more actions going on here. You know, some of them hopefully are relatively straightforward, like a website view that somebody visited a page on your site. That's, you know, a visit to a site, not a specific person. For example, here, this isn't 134 people. This is however many contacts that are probably showing up here, visiting your site 134 times. A link click means that somebody clicked a link somewhere on your site, for example. So there's just a lot of these details that, you know, if you have specific questions, let me, you know, let us know. You can see if they visited the member area, if they opened email, there's certain ones here for texting. So this is, you know, these are the common areas here for system activity. The top contacts, this this just aggregates all activity for every specific or, you know, for the specific top 20 people that are on your website or doing things, and there may not even be on your website. If they're just opening emails, that activity would show up here too. So you can kind of see who's the most busy on your site. And generally speaking, that can, those might be the people that are most interested, or you want to reach out to, you know, if you haven't been in touch with lately, you can see how interested they are just by this. And if you want a name in a list, you can kind of toggle back and forth and see the numbers. And then either way, you can like click on them and go to their contact record as well. There's other analytics kind of tucked throughout the system too. One is this activity link down here under my site. This has kind of an overview of a lot of different types of activity on the system. So this is an overall view. The number of days varies on your plan. I think this demo account is on higher plans. It's got a longer look back period. You can see your activity on the website, this messaging activity, these are activities or texts and emails that you have sent, as well as the actions on those. You can kind of see like, oh, I sent the text. Now I got all these website visits. You can see them correspond. And then the personal activities, this kind of keeps track of like how busy you have been with putting in to-dos or follow-up plans or, you know, working, essentially working the non-technical side, probably the business, you know, reaching out, making phone calls, that sort of thing. Yeah, then, you know, it also shows you the top pages viewed. So this is interesting. If you're a blogger and you see a specific blog is getting a lot of traffic, that can be really, really useful. You know, maybe, maybe it's working, or you know, maybe that's kind of your main thing that you want to focus on. So there's a lot of interesting and or interesting data that can be found here. And then it does track some different lead sources, and there's some custom stuff too. So yeah, there's a few other few other analytics tucked throughout the system too, like under Landing Pages. There's, if you push Show Activity, it'll show you your activity on these landing pages. And some of these are really interesting too. Like, if you click on Statistics, and this is available only on certain plan levels. I don't remember what. But it'll actually show you like the number of webs or the number of times this specific landing page was viewed in the last 120 days and how many new leads you got. So you can kind of calculate a conversion percentage, essentially, like in this case, four out of 18 people got four leads out of 18 website visits. So whatever that is, you know, slightly 20% or whatever that is my math on the fly is doing. So but yeah, that's all that's tucked throughout the system here too. Like, you know, under Blog Posts, you can see activity down here too. It'll show you what's going on there. Events have that as well. Yeah, so that's the overview of it. It was probably pretty fast. But if you have a specific question, certainly let us know. I know sometimes some, you know, we've got some questions about like, what does this specific thing mean? And just email out and let us know.
Yeah, and just a pro tip for you guys, when you go back and watch this recording on YouTube, all of these recordings are on YouTube. YouTube actually allows you to speed up or slow down the playback of something. So if you ever run into a clip like this and you're like, whoa, 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 hold on, say that like half as fast, you can literally make the replay slow down to half speed if you need to. All right. So actually, speaking of, Hi Jean, she says that she's had good oiling for a couple of months, but she feels overwhelmed. It seems so second nature to all of you techies. You talk fast, and most of the time, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm having a hard time knowing where to start and totally overwhelmed. So I feel you. I'm I'm actually not a techie, Jean. I very much, I believe, all of us here, with maybe the exception of Greg, and I don't know, you guys can speak for yourselves, came into this not really necessarily being techies, but just kind of learned this one piece at a time, you know, myself included. What I can recommend is first that you be gentle with yourself, that you have made a huge step in making a commitment to building your business in a new way. And and this is not something that comes overnight or even necessarily naturally for anybody. This is learning a new skill that's a valuable skill to learn. It's actually a whole set of skills here, like pick one and go with it. And I can't recommend enough that you follow a system like Go for Gold. If you have Go for Gold and you follow the modules, they actually show you step by step in context of a strategy that you're actively using to share Young Living, how to use our system. So that was something that we co-created with Martha, with Martha Crecci, who went gold in six months in Young Living, to to not just repeat what she did, but to repeat what she did in a way that utilizes our system and takes a lot less time than she actually spent on the day-to-day when she was getting that done in the first place. So I highly, highly recommend that. You can still use the code NEWGGMEMBER for a discount as well on on that program. But even if you decided not to do that, we have Dustin for Diamond is is something that you can actually enable in your account. It teaches you just step by step, do this thing, one thing at a time, or even this little teal bar, you see up this this good oiling setup progress up here at the top. Just do one of these things at a time. Just learn one thing at a time, learn how to upload your contacts from your VO, and then, you know, learn how to send an email out to them, right? Send a newsletter out to them. Just pick one thing. And and you'll build on those things. Put just one thing at a time. Got to learn to crawl before we can learn to run, right? Got to walk in between. But but we're here for you. And if you ever need any help on a live setting, like if you ever feel like I just need somebody to hold my hand and walk me through this, reach out, ask if you can be with us live on a session like this, request that. I specifically would like to have my hand held and walk through this. Can you do that with me? We have space in this this weekly session for that purpose. So you're, any of you are welcome to request that and reach out. That's that's why we do this live and not just as a recorded training out for you guys every week. So and we're grateful to have you here. All right. Tricia asks, are there already set up campaigns we can use? Plug in your contacts and go. Yes. Yes, 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 there is. You can edit ours. You can copy and edit ours. You could write your own, but we also just have them in there, ready to go for you. It's all the system is already plugged up and ready to go the moment you sign up. You put in your Young Living Member number. You now have a website that you can use that actually literally refers people to sign up with your Young Living links, right? With with your member number attached and everything. So it's ready for you to go out of the gate. If you're here, you've been here a few times. You see that there is a ton of stuff you can do with this, but literally the simplest thing you can do is take the website that you get, the link you get when you sign up with us, and use that to share with the next person who's interested in learning more about Young Living. And it's all ready to go. It's all done for you. You don't need to do a thing, learn a thing. Just here's the link and share it. All right. Randy figured that out. Guys, aromasharingonline.com is where you take advantage of these specials that we've shared. Jean says she feels like she needs a kick, a kickstart to overcome the paralysis. Maybe, guys, in the chat, if you're in Go for Gold, let her know how that might have kickstarted you. Because I really can't recommend anything else as highly as that, because it really does kind of walk you step by step. And there's a Facebook group that is so active and supportive of people who follow the strategy and know the system and started exactly where you are, who could help you too. All right. I have Grow Workspace and would love to incorporate or link the Get Oiling Bundle Classes into some of my newsletters and within the vaults. I figured out that the best way to offer the classes on social media is to make a landing page that will trigger the class campaign. But what's the best way to link a newsletter in a vault or to trigger the course campaign? So what what I recommend here, and I highly recommend you use your Grow Workspace bundles to build out your member area vaults for for teaching and training, so that you have kind of an encyclopedia for people to reference, and you don't have to go digging through information every time someone has a question, you can point, right? They do so much time. But to answer your question, what I really love to do when I'm setting up a a member area vault is to embed this way. And we actually do, if you look up Sway on our YouTube channel, we teach you how to do this. We embed this way on a lesson in the vault. So the lesson would actually be about the Grow Workspace bundle specifically. So let's just call it Kid Sense. And so the the sway link is embedded. And then if you have that text or email campaign set up in your Get Oiling system, then you would have text, Kid Sense, or whatever the the keyword is to your Get Oiling number, so that they then receive the text. And that would just be written underneath the sway in that lesson, or you would put a link to the landing page there, so that they could access that as well. Or again, alternatively, you could create a video going through the sway, or not the sway, but the the picture files. Seems like a little more work than you should need to do. But yeah, that's how you incorporate the campaign, just that the link or the information as to how they can self-import themselves, put themselves into the campaign automatically. All right. Susan says, I'm a monthly subscriber currently. If I convert to an annual subscription, would these apply to me? Yes.
Yes.
All right. Oh, Terry would like to know how to change the color of her links. They're set to green, but I want to change them to purple.
Okay, cool. Well, there's a couple of different ways to do this. If you're on Premium or Higher, under my site settings down here, this bottom link, there is a little button here that says Custom Colors and Fonts, and you can come in here and change, I believe, primary color is the link color. Don't quote me on that. I'd have to look that up originally, but there's a way to change the link color on here. If you're just looking for, say, an individual, say, you have a blog post, and you want to change the link color on a blog post, I'll just make a link here quick. And let's put it in. Get Oiling. And then all you have to do is highlight it, and then there's a font color or a text color icon here. And you could change it to whatever color that you want, and it'll change that link to that color. So it kind of depends on what you're doing and what plan you're on, but you can totally do it.
And what you mean by what plan you're on is that you can actually make this a a setting applied across your site with custom fonts and colors, right?
Yes. Yep, that's a site-wide setting versus like just this one link on that one blog post that I was writing. So yeah, my site settings, custom colors and fonts. It's available on Premium and Higher. It does let you change fonts as well, you know, so you can have headline font and body text font and change some, you know, there's a number of different options available to you. There are some presets here, as well as you can click on these and then change the color, you know, if you want to customize them for your own. Right? Like I said, I think primary is the link color, but I don't quote me on that. Right? Like I said, I think primary is the link color, but I don't quote me on that. I'll have to look that up.
Awesome. Yeah. So guys, if your, if your branding is really dialed in and you're super clear on the colors and fonts that you want to use. If you're at premium, you can have this stuff applied across your entire site automatically. All right. Dana asks, can new members use our referral link and get these bonuses? Yes. Anyone who signs up or upgrades to annual, who is already a member, during the Aroma Sharing period, which is now through the seventeenth, you get access to these bonuses. And of course, there are also ways that you can enter to win if you're a member and maybe you're not interested or ready to upgrade to, to annual for the other bonuses, you can still enter in a number of different ways to win the, the, the rose oil. And also there's a way for you to get into personal branding intensive that, that you can actually get into even if you don't upgrade. I think it's a few, if you refer three members. Oh, look, Greg's got the rose oil right there. Here, there it is. We already have it, you guys. So cool. Stuff is so nice. All right. So are all these incentives just for new members in Get Oiling or if we already have a Good Oiling website? So you can, if you upgrade, you get access. So if you are currently month to month and you go to annual. And of course, depending on what level of annual you go up to, there's different levels of incentive and bonus available for you there. Guys, just make sure you go over to aromasharingonline.com and find us there. You will get access to all this information and these great giveaways that you're not going to find anywhere else right now. They're literally there, just there. Get, uh, so aromasharingonline.com. All right. So if you have signed up for Get Oiling and you're brand new and you're like, just, you're like, oh my God, I should have waited. I didn't know. Just send us an email. We'll have a chat, okay? All right. Heidi says, I created a lead magnet funnel. When and where do I start using it? So this should be covered specifically in that Go For Gold module, talking about the places that you can put it. But for anyone who creates a funnel, and what a funnel is, guys, it's a landing page where people enter their name and information that delivers something that they want, which is usually a video or something like that. And there's, Greg has actually shown you how to look this stuff up in Get Oiling right now. And then it delivers an automated campaign after they've entered their information. That is a thing that you can have anywhere. You can have it on business cards. You can have it in your social profile. You could have it in, you know, in a link in your, your Instagram. It could be anywhere. And you make a blog post, put it at the bottom of a blog post, make a YouTube video, put it in the description. A, a funnel is more important than a website. If your website doesn't have a funnel on it, your website is a glorified digital business card. So the funnel is the most important thing. You want to get that out in as many ways as you can, ideally with helpful content. So that people can say, I like what you had to say. Yes, I would love to know more. And then they go to the landing page, they put their information in and get more information. All right. Nikki says she hopped on a little late. Are there any differences in the freebies during the Aroma Sharing event for those of us renewing our Get Oiling annual plans? How would that work?
Yeah, that's a good question. You can certainly reach out to us. Depending on your renewal, we can figure out, you know, something, I think.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of a calendar thing, right? Like, I mean, if it's coming up and it's, yeah. So yeah, just reach out, support at GetOiling.com. How do we copy a campaign so we can use and make it our own?
Great question. Yeah. So let me walk you through this one. Again, that's under Settings and Campaigns right here. And then there's this little page, it looks like two stack sheets of paper. So just click this little icon next to whatever one that you want to copy. It can be your own. It can be a built-in one. Give it a name, hit okay, and then you'll end up with a new campaign. And then you can go ahead and edit it.
Perfect. Cornelia is asking about, she was thinking about hosting her domain, switching from a different provider with us. Does your offer apply to existing members as well? So if you already own a domain, then you can, I mean, it doesn't cost you anything to plug it up to your site. If you want to get one through us and have us handle that for you, that's something that usually has an added cost and we are giving that away to annual members who become annual members during Aroma Sharing. So if you are month to month and you'd like an additional domain in your case, then you would have that if you upgraded, right?
Yeah, and they're, you know, certainly reach out. Cornelia, do you have any questions about that? Depending on your situation.
Especially if you already have it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. How do I add additional email addresses to a draft email without having to go out of the draft again and through the whole process of selecting people all over again? I know what she's talking about. You know what she's talking about?
I do, I do. It's on our wishlist. It's towards the top. So, yeah.
So I, I, I do this, I do this a lot. If you are not super clear, just as sort of like a pro tip, if you're not super clear on who you want this particular message to go to before you start writing, I would either start writing in a WordPress processor first and get super clear on what I want to say. Or make a saved reply like Greg is showing here. These things don't have to last forever. You could just go ahead and write this and, you know, who knows? If it's something that you could see yourself using again, you've just created something that saves you time in the future. So your draft goes here and then all you would have to do is when you compose the message, there's a little saved replies dropdown menu and you can just grab this message from there. This is how I send probably ninety percent or more of the emails that go out with Get Oiling and in the other ways that I, I personally use the system. I have emails that are already written because I, I do say a lot of the same things frequently. And so they go and save replies, drop it down after I decide who it goes to. So definitely try to use this feature as much as you can. Saves a ton of time. All right. Does the Zoom link work for unlimited Zoom time or is it limited? The Zoom included with Get Oiling?
Yeah, it's the same as the Pro account. It's not technically unlimited. It's 24 hours, but if you've got the stamina to hang on that long, awesome. But it's the same as the Zoom Pro account.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is not the same as going and getting a free Zoom and having that forty minute cutoff. This is like having a paid Zoom account, except it's included. All right. Do we have to select those we filtered for to send an email? Or did the filter, or if we did the filter, can we just send the email and not have to check mark each box of contacts? If you have filtered, it's done it for you. You don't have to do anything else unless you want to exclude or something.
Yeah, the number should change. So like this is the whole contact list in this test database of two ninety-two. If I come in here and I filter down to, I don't know, pick a couple of tags, hopefully this, this tag has something on it. Got one contact. Okay. Yeah. So if I do that, actions and then mail, you'll see it says one contact. So it is filtering it.
Awesome. All right. If we're using the blog, how do we best use it to appear on Google searches? I'm not sure I understand the advanced portion on the blog HTML tags, et cetera. So you would want to make sure that you are using, going down to advanced options here that Greg is showing. You're going to want to make sure that you are using a meta description. Make sure that you've done some keyword research. Basically, you want to get into the person's head that you want to be talking to and think about what they're going to Google and searching for. You know, what are the questions that they're asking Google? What are the terms they're looking for? Make sure that they're included in your meta description. And then also make sure the specifically, like the best words or keyword strings you want to include in the title of your post and then in, in headers and in text in the post as well. That's, that is the fastest strategy of SEO I think I've ever given. And it's super vague on purpose because that is not my expertise. But just make sure that you are including those things. And, and there's a lot of really great training, actually. Martha Cracey, you guys, this is the kind of stuff she actually teaches and talks about. So, so be on the lookout for things that she teaches. And that way, I think she actually has gone over stuff like this. Maybe guys in the chat, correct me if I'm wrong. If you're in the diamond lane, I think that she teaches about this. And there's lots of free stuff that's just generally out there as well. If it works for WordPress, it works for us. So, I mean, any kind of additional education that you receive on SEO, search engine optimization, that's what you want to be looking for, is going to work for Get Oiling.
Oh, it looks like I'm talking too fast. Sorry about that.
Linda, let us know what the, yeah, what was the one?
I don't know what question that was, but while we're on that topic, you had mentioned about how to change the playback speed in YouTube. So when you're watching a YouTube video, you can click Settings and then there's a playback speed right here. And then it gives you a bunch of options from slower.
All the way down to a quarter time.
Yep, quarter time, really slow. Or, yeah, of course, you can pause the replace too. So if there's something in particular you want me to cover again, let me know. I am talking slower than I normally do.
And just FYI for you Reds, YouTube does allow up to two times speed. You can blaze through the videos. All right. So we got that. It's funny. Live person coaching service. So we don't have that specifically, but we often do help. And this is actually an instance where we are right now, where we can help you one-on-one. We do, unlimited cases where there's availability, have coaching available or done-for-you services. And if there's something in particular that you're looking for, definitely reach out to us and we can have a chat about that. All right. What I still need, no. So Karen, if you have another texting, text marketing provider and you come to Get Oiling, you don't need another text marketing provider anymore. We can port your number over from wherever you are. With the exception of say, I don't think we can port in like a cell phone number necessarily. Maybe we can, I don't know.
There's, I don't know, there's some magic that the texting services have about which numbers can and cannot be. So you can send us an email and then we'll look up your number and see if it can be transferred. And even if you can't, you can choose a new number if you don't have the two-way texting. It is an add-on service. Well, except for this bonus period now where it's free for either three months or a year. To activate that, you want to make sure to click this chat link at the top if you haven't already, and it'll walk you through the process of buying or not buying, but selecting the phone number that you want to use. And then that will be your number that you can send and receive texts from. And it's all integrated. And that applies to anyone who signs up during this time period. I think it gives you like a month or two to activate your two-way texting. So you want to be sure to do that. Once you've signed up, come in, click chat, pick out your number and then you're locked in.
Perfect. Yeah. So, so you don't really, I mean, guys, the only thing that you need, if you have Get Oiling, is the VO, of course. There's definitely some tools, I think, like oily tools, where you can like forecast your income based on VO information. Those are super valuable, especially as a leader. But like just on the day-to-day to grow your business, if you have us and the VO, you don't really need anything else. I mean, but that's really all you need. If you want to kind of take it to the next level and make everything beautiful and save a lot of time, you can use some of our content providers who have already pre-written beautiful campaigns and educational resources for you that can plug straight into your Good Oiling account for sharing and for syndicating broadcasting. But, but yeah, you really don't need anything else once you've got us. All right. What is the annual fee for basic for those that have it already? So that would just be an upgrade from where you are. So you're going to want to get in touch with us, right? So for upgrades, do they need to reach out to support?
Yeah, yeah, you do have to contact us. I mean, it depends on if you've got any other add-ons, you know, if you've added on vaults or Zoom, you know, so just reach out to us and we'll get you a price.
Oh, guys, celebration point here for a second. Genevieve just hit executive this month thanks to these resources. Yes. Nice.
Yay.
Well done.
Good job.
So cool. All right. So yeah, if you reach out to us, you can see our annual pricing when you go to the signup page. Toggle to annual and then of course, depending on where you're at currently, you know, we can work with you to make sure that you get that set up. Can we switch two-way texting to a Panama phone number? Greg, do you know if that's a, you know, if that's a, a country that we have texting in? We're in over two hundred countries for texting you guys, by the way.
Yeah, you can, I know you can text there. I am, I'm not sure offhand about whether we can acquire a phone number in Panama, if that's what you're wondering about. So send us an email and we can look into that and see. There's a smaller list of countries that we can get a number in, but we definitely have. Some countries have like residency, residency requirements and so on, but we've, we've done it in, in Europe and Australia and yeah, just a bunch of places.
All right. How do rollover credits work for sending emails and texts? I don't currently have texting ability, but I'm noticing my rollover credits are zero.
Zero, that, I mean, I guess it depends if you're brand new, maybe that would be the case, but to find out your credits, it's under my account settings down here in the bottom left of the screen and then click on my plan and then you'll see the credits right here. You'll see the rollover credits, whatever might be there. What it does, it basically takes, if you view your usage history here, it'll go back to the last two months that are not the current billing period. So if this is the current billing period for you, which it most likely, usually is, look back for the last two and see the credits remaining. It should be basically the credits remaining for the last two months plus whatever you, your plan credits are available for this month minus anything that you've used. That's essentially your rollover credits. It is two months. But if it's zero, yeah, send us an email, you know, maybe we can look into your specific account and see what's going on.
All right. Cornelia says Martha's program is intense. She loves it. So much value helps her to get her ducks in a row. So necessary. Cannot agree enough, Cornelia. No worries, Jean. If you need help, again, if you want some help with us live, this, this is open to anyone. We can bring you out live. We've done this before and we're happy to do it again. All right. Mary has a vendor event this Sunday. She's heard of us talking about a simple way to get contacts directly and to get oiling from a vendor event. That was with a landing page. Yes. And there is a specific video on our YouTube channel. If you look up vendor events on our YouTube channel, Get Oil, sorry, youtube.com/getoiling. There is a video in there that walks through this step by step exactly. But here's the cheat sheet. Set up your funnel and use kiosk mode.
Yep, this kiosk mode link, what that does, normally a landing page, once you, let me, I'll, I'll click on it here and show you. Once you register, normally it takes you somewhere. But what kiosk mode does is, once you register, it takes you back to the same screen. So basically you can have a computer sitting there at your event. People can sign up online and then they start getting your emails or texts right away, which is really an awesome way to follow up, you know, right away while it's fresh in their mind.
All right. Carrie is asking for definitions of lead magnet funnel and landing page. Do we have that down there in the little question mark box, Greg?
That's a good question. I'm not sure about those keywords specifically. I believe that
Landing page and campaign right there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so in context, right?
I think so. Yeah, it kind of explains and then it links to a training we did about how to build funnels some time ago.
Yeah. So guys, if you, if you want to reference these terms and learn these terms, just search funnel in this little question mark box here because it shows everything in its context, right? So a lead magnet is the thing that people opt in for. It's what they want to get. It's a video. It's a guide. It's, it's a something, right? That is part of a funnel, the landing page, like you just saw in kiosk mode there, that is the front door to the funnel. Everything's explained right here in the, in the help center when you search for funnel. And if you are, and I believe you are, in Go For Gold, we walk through how to build each of those in context. And then of course, we do have GetOiling.com/getneeds that teaches all of those things step by step. Catherine would like to know where to upload files. So I assume this would be like PDFs and things like that.
Yeah. So anywhere that there's an editor in the system. So blog post, writing a new blog post is a good easy example. If you open up this, this section here, there is an upload file button. You can drop in your file and it'll put in a link. Once you've done that, it kind of, it goes into your file manager, which is the icon next to it where there's this, I guess, yeah, pick one of these things. Maybe it's a link to this one. It puts in basically the link to whatever file that you want to. And in this case, you don't even, so because it's uploaded to the web, you don't have to use it here instead of this blog post that you uploaded it. Once you put the link in there, you can just grab the link here, copy this link and then use it wherever you want to. You know, if you're pasting it in some other email or on Facebook or whatever, essentially this becomes a link that you can use wherever you want to, once you've uploaded it. There is a file size limit. I think it's somewhere around fifteen, ten to fifteen megabytes. So if you have problems, there are PDF shrink tools out there, compressing tools that you can use if it's a PDF.
Awesome. All right. So Kenzie's asking, okay, she says, I have Project Broadcast, Zoom, Grow Workspace accounts already. Do I continue to individually keep all of those memberships or subscriptions or can Get Oiling replace those accounts? The only thing that Good Oiling in this case does not replace for you is Grow Workspace. They are a content partner with us, with Get Oiling. If you go over to our, there we go, this is on our website. Scroll down on our website and see this. When you have Grow Workspace, you get a bundled sharing link or you get like a, a resource bundle link that you can click. And if you're signed into your Good Oiling account, it moves all of those resources right over into your Good Oiling account. So you don't have to set up those campaigns. They're ready to go for email or text. And yeah, so, and of course Zoom, like Greg mentioned already, is already included. So highly recommend that you do keep your content provider. And of course, if you have a content provider, if it's not working with us yet, we would love to work with them to help you get more great stuff into your account. All right. How exactly does using your own existing domain with Get Oiling work? I have content on my.com right now. Would it remain or how does that work? So this would depend on your strategy and what you want to do. If you have a website currently that you like, that's working for you or if it's related to another business or something like that, you do have the option of keeping that and then making us a subdomain of that dot com. So it could be, you know, oils.yourname.com or whatever you wanted to set it up as. Or you could have another one entirely. It really just kind of depends on, on what your overall strategy is. And feel free to reach out for more, you know, personalized information there. All right. Catherine asks, how do I select many members of several legs in my downline and prospects for an email?
So the tree, yeah, the organization viewer here does not, it only shows your team. So you know, however many contacts you have in there, this list includes all your prospects. So like this card view and this list view, these include team and prospects and whoever, basically anyone in your contact manager. This team viewer over here, this little tree viewer only shows people that are in your young living organ. How it knows that is they have the sponsor number and then roller number and a member number. And it can connect that and build this organization there. So in this case, it sounds like you would, I mean, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. They require some multiple steps. It sounds like you're familiar with the leg mailer. So what you could do, let's say this is the leg that you did want to mail. What you could do is go up to actions, you know, this item here about adding campaign, follow up time bulk or tags, and then add a tag. So basically you'd tag that leg, make sure to check the box to add to the downline of each selected contact as well. You could tag that and then go back and tag your prospects the same way, however they might be, or maybe they already have a tag. And then you would just go back over to the contact manager and then, whoops, wrong link. And then you'd filter by that tag that you had added, and then you can mail it out that way. That's probably an easier way, an easy way.
And another consideration you want to make sure you're taking is that typically the kind of information that you're going to send, unless it's just general, hey, I made a blog post and everybody might like it. It, you're gonna want to send different types of content to different types of tags on your list, right? So your members and your prospects don't necessarily need to receive the same information. Your members need to know PV promos, your prospects need to know why they need to get on a call with you. Or maybe, you know, know about your upcoming challenge that they might come and join. So do keep that in mind. And it is a little easier as well to do the whole tagging thing and to navigate that if we are strategically communicating as well. All right. Do our zoom links ask attendees to enter their name and email before they join our zoom sessions like we do to join you today?
No, they do not. Their meetings, I think that's a webinar feature.
But they do have to have a password.
Yeah, that's, that is something new. I think Zoom started requiring that a few days ago. There's this little banner up here. Any meeting now that you create inside of Zoom does have a password on it. Now it does, so it automatically generates a random six digit password for you. So you don't have to come up with one, but you can totally change it. One nice convenience is that they have the link. It includes the password in kind of a semi encrypted manner. So you don't have to have passwords separately. You know, they can still just click a link and get in. But if you do want to collect their name essentially beforehand, you could set up a landing page. That's a great option. And then provide the zoom link after the landing, after they register in the landing page.
All right. Carrie asks, does the chat live using text with get oiling use points? So if you're using this feature right here, you can go back, back and forth infinitely with no extra charge, no use of credits, not a totally free, this is our, our chat feature, two-way chat feature. And, and it will show up in their phone as a text. But if you're in your dashboard and you're sending it from here, you're not going to be using up any credits at all. So let's just say, for instance, if you're using one of Jen from Modern Companion, she creates campaigns that you can load into your system that actually really encourage people to respond back to you. And so the idea is to use the campaign, not to just promote something, but to start a conversation. So you can actually carry the conversation out here. The campaign will use up credits, but when you're over here chatting, it doesn't use anything at all. All right. Shannon, to get someone to opt into a text campaign, can I just give them my good oiling phone number and the keyword? Or do I need to send them a text to opt in? No, you got it. You got it. Send the keyword to your good oiling number and they're on. Right?
Yep.
All right. Can a team member get tagged by just clicking a link? No, that's, that's a far future wishlist for us. That's some super ninja stuff. So she says, I invited a couple of times team members to live zoom calls and they registered through the provided event link. But I get these double contacts, then it feels like I'm missing something. Should it not just update the contact that I've invited? So they use a different email address. It's, I mean, it's the system's not going to know that it's them in that second email address in that case. Greg, how, how would you, how would you approach that?
Yeah, it does try to, you know, if you register on a landing page, it does do its best to not create a duplicate. So it looks it up by both email and the phone number that they enter in. If it finds a match, it'll update the existing contact. So that's really usually the only time that that happens. Fortunately, we just added a contact merge feature in your contact manager. If you do end up with duplicates, you can select, you know, once you have two selected, you can click on this merge contacts link down here and it'll walk you through the process of merging them and combining them into one, one record.
All right. Jean asks, if I purchase grow workspace, do I purchase it, then add it? Is it pretty clear on how to do that? So when you purchase for a workspace and you get the bundles that they offer, there's going to be a link for get oiling inside of those bundles. And so long as you're signed into your good oiling account, when you click that link, it's going to open up a page where you're just going to check a box and click a button. And then those things are automatically imported to your good oiling account. And there's instructions there as well. It's pretty clear. All right. How many months are the credit rollovers?
It's two months, the, the two prior months, not including the current month.
Okay. All right. Could you please talk about follow-up after a live, online live event? Is it better to send sway campaign email or recording of actual events? It ran almost two hours. Is that too long? Also in sway campaigns from grow is closing slides. It says, contact me to get started. Is it better for them to reach out or also include our young living link? So it kind of depends, right? Like I, I don't believe that you should be giving your young living link out to anybody that you aren't either sitting next to or on the phone with or other or on zoom with and walking them through, click here, do this, pick your kit, get started. I, I don't believe in dropping your link and believing that somebody is going to do something with it. They might, and they might even like a solid sometimes, but it's not a duplicable strategy. So basically it just kind of depends on, well, there's not a science to it, right? So if it's a two hour event, I would definitely provide a couple of options. I'm not sure where you're planning to host it. You could certainly put it on a YouTube channel, make it unlisted, and then share that link or embed it somewhere on your site for sharing. But I mean, really after somebody's attended a live event, you want to do everything you can to speak with them, right? So make the first prerogative in outreach after a live online event to have a one-on-one conversation. And if they feel like they need supplemental information, then you step in with the sway. Or if you want to use the sway as an additional teaching tool as you're moving toward closing and starting them as a new member, then do that. But I wouldn't necessarily rely on these things to do the work for you of actually getting someone started. That really does require a one-on-one and that should always be your prerogative, especially after someone has reviewed information. The next step, you gotta get on the phone with them, on zoom with them and ask for the decision. All right. Um, all right. I have a monthly subscription, so I need to pay the annual upgrade to get the free offers today. Guys, some of the offers you don't have to do anything for other than text and a code. So go over to aroma sharing online and find us there and you can get all of these details. A lot of the stuff that we have mentioned, like the texting, become an icon, this other stuff. That is something that if you upgrade, if you're monthly right now and you upgrade to annual, you can get those bonuses too. Or if you are coming up on a renewal or you got any questions about sort of the minutia of that, definitely reach out to us one-on-one. But there are multiple offers that are in there, including that free course that you, I mean, you don't even have to be a good oiling member to get that. So aromashearingonline.com, please head over there and check it out. All right. Stephanie, does the content bundle from grow workspace have to be altered before brought into get oiling? Or can I do it in get oiling? It depends on the type of content. It would be if it's a campaign, for instance, you would edit that in get oiling. And it is editable. It's not like you have to copy it to edit it. Once it's in your account. If it is a sway, basically you would just be logging in and editing your sways. But I guess, I mean, guys, is that true? Like most of it, if it's not a sway, you'd be editing in, inside the get oiling system, right?
Yeah, you'd, you'd put that under, you know, it'll show up. Most of the content that grow workspace has is a campaign. So under settings and campaigns, it'll, once you've imported it, it'll show up here. I think they had, they call it like, yeah, they put the word grow on there. So you know where it came from. You just click on it and you can edit it like any other campaign, like it's yours then. Before you send it out, we have, we have had some people who just send it out and they're like, oh no. But you do want to definitely look at the grow campaigns because they do have some tweaks that you need to make to break and send those out usually anyway.
Catherine has a wishlist to put the file management on the main menu.
I think that was your wishlist too, Ashlyn.
That's why I'm saying it out loud. I do a lot of like uploads and stuff and I, I'm with you. I'm with you, sis. All right. So can you send pictures within chats or do you have to use text which uses credits?
You do have to send those through the contact manager right now.
Yeah. So I mean, just, just chatting back and forth. It's not quite like Facebook, right? I mean, it's back and forth for you and it feels like, you know, kind of like Facebook messenger because you're in a browser doing this. But, but yeah, the, the images are going to be sent from your contact manager. Cornelia loves the contact merge feature. Oh, it's awesome. All right. Susan, should we do the branding course before setting up our custom website and get oiling? Still honing in on branding and bat signal cannot be tweaked on the site as I go. I'm getting ready to take Allison's course, which should I do first? So I mean, the, the truth is everything is editable. Everything is editable on our site. Everything that you do can be tweaked and it should be because this isn't an exact science and, and you aren't a static being as a personal brand. So I would, I mean, what you're going to learn, if you take Allison's course on the homepage, is something that you need to know regardless of what you do. So learning what she teaches and it is, these are skills that she's teaching, skills and mindsets that she's teaching that are applicable to our system in more ways than just the homepage. So whatever you have access to and want to go with, if you want to do multiple things at a time, it's kind of up to you. Just make sure that you're implementing what you're learning. In terms of the branding intensive, what, what we're going to be doing, that is not actually going to be live until August. And you can get those details in the aromashearing books, if you go over there, aromashearingonline.com. So that is not something you need to be like, oh, wait, no, I want to do branding. Branding's not happening for a little bit. It's okay. Finish up what you want to do and you're not going to be any worse. We're doing it in a different quarter. All right. Which is better Vimeo or private YouTube page? So YouTube pages are private, actually. I don't know if they have some kind of paid feature that I'm not really aware of. The best way to use YouTube is to get leads and to show up in front of people who don't know you yet. So with the information that you would want to be public, so this would be content, helpful content, lead generating content, where you put your landing page, the link to your funnel in the description to get leads. That's where you want to do the YouTube stuff for the stuff that you want to keep private, for the stuff that you would put inside of a closed group on Facebook, for instance. And you're wanting to maybe transfer what you're doing over to something that's, well, you know, less Facebooky. Highly recommend that you use Vimeo and, and so, so that you are able to host securely your content and truly control who actually gets to see it. So it really just depends. Lead content, YouTube, all day, everybody here should be doing it. But for the stuff that should only be for your members and clients, that's the kind of stuff that needs to be on Vimeo. All right. Is there a way to add a country, a field for the country code for registrations? This is from Cornelia. I'm manually changing the mobile numbers of my members in different countries with a country code field as additional field with help, also a segmentation of contacts. That's an interesting idea for the wishlist, for sure.
Yeah, I don't think that one is in the wishlist. I mean, one idea that comes to mind when you're creating, for example, a landing page and this applies to the page editor as well. I'll just create a new one here. You can change the label on the field. So if you wanted to say phone with country code or something like that, if people understand what that is, that might be one way to kind of address it at the moment. Or maybe just give an example, you know, plus whatever you want on there. So yeah, that's a great idea though. We'll add that to the list here.
Yeah, definitely. And I mean, if, if this is for members, I would say you can, you can even be a little bit more explicit with what you're asking them to do. And it's not that you can't be as explicit with leads. It's just if you're not making country specific content. I mean, yeah, this is really the best way to go, like if it's leads. Or please add country code when you, you know, enter your information or something to that effect. All right. Is there a way to make multiple hosts during zoom? So only their screen would show, not the participants? So in zoom meetings, you can make it like, make a co-host, right? Can you promote somebody in a zoom meeting?
No, I haven't actually tried that. I know there's a setting now with all the security changes they've made lately. There's a setting to lock it so that only hosts can share a screen. And so maybe that's what this person is talking about. But I'm not sure about whether or not you can make somebody a co-host on the fly, like you can with the webinar. And for those of you who were on this whole time, she actually made me a co-host, which then allowed me to share the screen. So that I'm not a hundred percent sure on. That may be something you could search the zoom help database about. They have a pretty good database.
Or just test it out. Start, start a meeting with someone and if you go to the, the participant section and you click on a name, if there are options, it's going to show you a menu. All right. Deb asks, when you send a text, can you make it personal like you can with an email? Yes. And, and in bulk, you can personalize 7,000 text messages at a time, going to each of those individual people. It's so cool.
Yep. So let's say I want to send it to all of these here. I'll just text however, well, not selected. Let me unselect. I'm going to deselect all, otherwise it's going to warn me. So say I want to text all 292 contacts. There's this little guy up here, click in the little chat bubble and click what you want. Most people just use the first name of the contact. It puts in a little tag. Type in your message, hit send, and then it'll personalize it along the way. So everybody's first name will get put in there, making it look like you're busy at your phone when you're actually not. Automation is awesome.
It really, really is, you guys. We had a question here about how to find Allison Marshall's website course. Just a couple of weeks back, I don't think we have like a, I mean, if we have a link, we could put in the chat here. Just a couple of weeks back, I think it's created beautiful get oiling homepage is the, the title or custom homepage for get oiling. It is in, it's two or three work sessions before this one in our YouTube recordings. Dana says, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, I do have the link. I'm going to be putting it in the chat here shortly.
Perfect. There it is. And it's, it's awesome. It's like the, the people who are making sites with this, like we see them come through regularly and gorgeous. Dana says YouTube does have non-public options for your videos. You send a link to those you want to see it. Yes, that, that is, that is an option that you have. It's just kind of a time consuming option that doesn't scale well for your time. So what, what I've recommended here are things that can grow with you and that can allow you to, you know, get more time back. But yes, that is an option. All right. I think, I mean, so that's, oh, there's one more. All right. For contacting the 10 a day, is it better in messenger or here with that cool text feature? All right. So what you're talking about is a daily, sort of a daily prescriptive activity that Martha gives you in one of her courses. And I would say, I mean, if you're contacting 10 a day, this is going straight to their cell phone. So that's, I mean, if you got their cell number, why not text them instead of trying to Facebook message them? I know, like unless I'm expecting a Facebook message, I might check my Facebook messages once a week. So I would, I'd personally go for text if you've got the number and you've got that relationship. You guys are so awesome for sticking around and asking all of these great questions. Make sure again, aromashearingonline.com, head over there. If you have any other questions, last call before we get going. Let's see. There you go. Greg's coming through with the links. Oh, you know what? There was, if you do have, just to kind of reiterate, I'm looking over in Slack, Amanda, just to reiterate, if you guys have questions about your existing membership and, and how you might be able to take advantage, if you have maybe say like you just started or you're coming up on a renewal, just reach out and, and we'll, we'll chat with you about what those parameters look like. Either way, aromashearingonline.com, we've got free giveaways for everyone and anyone can enter multiple times into the rose oil giveaway. And again, there are ways to access the, the personal branding intensive, even if you are, let's just say already an annual member and you want to be able to do it, there are ways to do that. So all that information is over there at aromashearingonline.com and look for get oiling and you know, happy shopping. There's so much cool stuff to look through there. All right. Anybody have anything else to add?
Lots, lots of amazing stuff because I made all the pages. I got to see all the products.
Can we show, can we show, can we show, Greg? Can we show them how to get in? How to find us? Can we show them this candy work, please? God, we should have done this way earlier.
Yeah. Saving the surprise for the end, right? Were you going to do that, Amanda? I guess I can share my screen because you're probably not going. Just one second here. Let me reshare one sec. I had stopped, thought we were at the end until this awesome idea came in. All right. See, share. Okay. So if you go to aromashearingonline.com, this is what you see. Okay. So if you go to aromasharingonline.com, this is what you see. And you got two choices. If you haven't been there before, you can, uh, get in for free. All you have to do is put in your name and email. If you put in your phone number, you'll actually get a text to be able to create your account too. So this does, this is, as Ashley mentioned, this is using our platform here. So this is hosted in a member area. It's a vault inside of a member area, aromasharing2020 is a vault. Um, that's how you get in. So once you register for free, you'll get an email and a text, um, if you put in a phone number with a link. Once you get that link, click it, it'll ask you to set up your password. Uh, the next time that you, it should remember you. So you should just be able to log in here. And then it will take you right here to your shopping area. Um, all the sponsors are listed here, um, right away when you first come in. And there's links to their individual pages, uh, I believe is, you know, as well. So you can start your shopping by clicking down here on start shopping. This is where it gets fun. Here's all the categories, all the visually fun stuff starts with all these different categories. You can look, these top two are, are lists. Actually, I don't know, Amanda, do you want to narrate this? I mean, I can demo this, but you set this up. So I, you probably know it better than I do.
Sure. Yes. Um, so yeah, we have two categories. The first one is the product categories. Um, the product category is based off of, um, all the categories and, um, alphabetical, um, based on, excuse me. Those, um, categories under each one. Um, and then you can either choose within that product category to click on the category itself. Or you can also click on one of the, um, business names to go directly to their page. Um, and then, um, the A to Z list is all alphabetized by last name. But then again, we did put the business name beside it as well. Um, and then you can just click on any one of those names, um, to get to their site. Um, and then, um, back again, we have all of the categories listed as well. So, um, if you want to pop one of those up, the first three, um, there are just a little bit bigger. But, um, if you can click on both, um, the image and then as well as the business name, both of those locations do go, um, to the person's page. Um, some of them have videos that you can play, uh, others, um, have, um, the images as well as the, uh, GIFs. In some locations and stuff like that. Uh, there are some that are offering, um. Discounts or they are offering, um. Uh, giveaways and all that stuff. So you definitely wanted to, um, take a look at that. Um, and then as well as, um, if you want to Greg, go to the top page. You could also click on the, uh, click here for featured vendors of the day. There will be, um, a couple of them every day or so. Um, and then just, um. You can take a look at those as well. They have a little bit more, um. Information underneath them than just the regular page does. But, um, yeah, it is really, really exciting that all the vendors are excited to, um. To help you out. Um, once you do get to their page, to this page and you click on each business, there is a link within the business. To then be taken to their website, um, to, or you know, their Facebook page or, uh, their, um, wherever their, um, products are to actually. To purchase them. So yeah, so, um, it will take you directly there. So, yeah.
All right. Jill was asking, how did you scroll the photos at the top of the aromas sharing screen?
Yeah, it should actually, um, automatically rotate through them. But if, think if you just click on it too, Greg, doesn't it go faster?
Yeah, you can click on these side, on the side panels or these little dots if you want to skip through them. But yeah, it should automatically go as long as your mouse isn't on top of it. If you put your mouse on it, I think it pauses because it thinks you're looking at it. Um, but otherwise it'll go.
Awesome. All right. Amanda, this is gorgeous. You did such a good job.
Thank you.
All right. So guys, aromasharingonline.com, head over there now, get started. Let's see. Uh, will this be available after convention? Uh, good question.
It will, it, it will only be available until nine, I think it's eastern time on the 17th. Uh, uh, open for, um, making purchases. Jill, to answer your question, we created it using our member area. So, um, so yeah.
Yeah. Go to get oiling.com forward slash member training. If you want to make something cool like this, it's all there. This is insight, like you have this same capability, like we, we're hosting this event inside of get oiling. You can do great things in here too. This is so cool. You did such a great job. Awesome. All right, guys. Thank you so much for being here and, uh, for spending all this time. Thank you, Amanda, for helping to create this. Uh, thank you to Aroma Sharing for having us and, uh, really excited to see you with the virtual booth, you guys.
Yes.
Yeah.
There guys, let us know if you have any questions.
And we'll see you next week.
Bye.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone.